Now we move to the public hearing and we have Resolution 2023-24 approving obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for Schillmann Silk Shop LLC 9350 Joseph Campo.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have not only Ruben from the CED Department with the presentation and then we also have Milo here who's seeking this presentation. I don't know, do you want to do the presentation before and then open it for the hearing or do you want to do the hearing and then have them?
I think we start with the presentation.
Okay, Ruben, you want to step up. Milo, you want to go up too?
I should.
You may not come up when you're done, right?
Yeah. I'm going to pass out a PowerPoint. I accidentally uploaded the wrong one earlier today. We've been too fast. All right, so I just want to say thank you all for letting me be a part of this conversation. This is about an incentive for redevelopment on Joseph Campo. Incentives are a key tool for the city for developing the city how you want to see it. And so it's an important conversation. I also know it's a controversial one, and so I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to help inform your conversation. Excellent. So basically, I'm going to start by giving you an overview of what the incentive program is and then talk about the specific application that we have before us right now. So the law that allows this is called the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Exemption Act. And basically, it's a targeted incentive in order to achieve your development outcomes in the city. So if you want Joseph Campo to be renovated, you use these incentives to help those renovations happen. What it allows the city to do is to freeze taxes at the current rate and property owners can rehabilitate without having to pay the extra taxes that would normally come from improving your property for a certain number of years. That can be from one to 12 years. Whoa, not quite.
Sorry.
These exemptions can only be granted if it's commercial property, if it's declared obsolete by this assessor, which is to say that basically it's unusable in some form or another, and that it's already within a district that the city has decided is a target district, and that the application be approved by you all. So you all get the final say over whether these actually pass or not. It's not just a kind of blank slate. Your particular policy, you already have one on the books. It was passed in September of 2020. So the policy that's stated in the city says that the base exemption is for seven years. So if an application comes before the body and it is qualified, it checks all the boxes, you should start the exemptions at seven years. And then there's a point system for adding additional years, depending, mostly on the level of investment. So in the city, with the policy that's stated, if you basically put $250,500 into your investment, then you should be eligible for a 12-year abatement according to the policy that is currently on the books for Hamtramck. And the important thing to know about this, though, is that it's also revocable. So if someone comes before you and they say, "We're going to do X, we're going to do Y, we're going to do Z," and they don't actually follow through, then you all have the right at any point to bring it back, to take it back if they're not fulfilling their obligations. Excellent, thank you. So this is just a diagram to help kind of explain how the taxes work. So the first box, the current taxes, that's what the property is bringing into the city just as it is right now. There's a point at which the property is rehabilitated, it's renovated. Normally, that would mean that the taxes increase, but because of the abatement for however many years you want, that increase doesn't go into effect. So the person continues to pay their original taxes. And then finally, after the abatement ends, then the taxes go to what they would normally be based on the value of the property. So this particular application that we have before us is for 9350 Joseph Campo. It's at the intersection of Joseph Campo and Florian. They are asking for a 12-year abatement. The storefront has been vacant since the mid-2000s, and it has not been bringing in any taxes to the city up until these current property owners purchased it in 2019. So from 2008 to 2018, this property was either under, like, was not being paid taxes on or was under foreclosure. So the kind of idea that there is a kind of base of taxes that are being paid on a building, in this particular case, it doesn't actually quite apply because you're getting zero for this building. The current owners purchased the property in 2019. The assessor went and looked at it, declared that it was obsolete in 2022. The project that they are proposing is for a taproom. They will brew anals and lagers and also use the space. It will be available for events, for associations and community organizations. They are also planning on making it cultural and kind of artistic. They're going to have, every two weeks, have an alcohol-free night to be inclusive. This is the kind of vision that they've outlined, and I'm sure Milo will speak better to this in just a second. The key pieces of this, I think, for this body to consider are that the application is for a $680,000 rehabilitation. That's a lot of money for a storefront in Joseph Campo. It is only going to happen if the City Council approves some kind of abatement tonight because $250,000 of that is coming from Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant. So of their $680,000, $250,000 is coming from MEDC, but it's contingent upon this council approving some kind of local support. So this project will not happen if it does not get some kind of local support. And finally, this project will create 15 jobs in the process of its rehabilitation and four time, four full-time employees. So these are just a couple pictures of the property to show the state that it was in. So, and this is that same diagram, but with the numbers specific to this application put on it. So the taxes that the property should be, or that are being paid on the property right now are $3,650. After their renovations are done, it's estimated that the taxes would be $8,150. So for whatever period an abatement is issued, $4,500 will not be being collected by the city, but $3,650 will continue to be received by the city in addition to whatever economic benefits the business brings through the income tax for employees and collateral benefits to other businesses in the area. After the abatement ends, it will then be paying $8,150. So I just want to speak very quickly about this Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant that is a key part of this application. So this is something that has been promoted by the Community and Economic Development Department. Carolyn has, I believe, sent out an email to the council before, put it on Facebook. This is a huge opportunity for Hamtramck because it's the state giving money to rehab older buildings in the city's downtown, and anybody can apply. So if you want to take over a property on Joseph Campo and make it beautiful, turn it into the ideal kind of business, you can get this free money from the state, but it requires local support in order for it to happen. So it does require a little bit of kind of buy-in from the city. But it is a really cool program, and it bypasses the city in a way, in that business owners can go directly to the MEDC and get this money for these rehabilitations without requiring staff to do a bunch of extra work. And it's unlimited, which is a very technical for us. So our recommendation is to approve this for a 12-year abatement. There's a number of different reasons why we came to this conclusion, even though there are also important questions that I'm also going to raise for you all. So the $680,000 investment is well above the $250,000 investment that's in the current policy that says that qualifies it for a 12-year abatement. It's an important signal to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to say that Hamtramck is willing and excited to partner with developers, and it maintains this property as a tax-earning property. It keeps a business going, and given the property's history, that's an important benefit. And generally, it improves the downtown, which is the idea behind creating this incentive program in the first place. Yeah, and then the final is kind of just like an abstract idea a little bit, but this challenge of older cities, how do you redevelop in your downtowns? Suburbs, they have space, it's easy to do new builds. That's not the case here. So you have to think about what can we do to encourage people to come back to the cities where things are more challenging, and that's what this program is.
Thank you.
There's part two of the presentation?
Milo. Mr. Mayor, just let's say one thing. I said it before, Ruben is an intern for us. As you normally know, Ms. Carolyn would be presenting. She has, she's on short leave of absence right now. Ruben stepped up, in my opinion, did an excellent presentation. He's leaving us this week. I tried to convince him to stick around, but he's continuing on with his education and finishing his graduate studies in the, is it dissertation?
Yeah.
He's finishing up his dissertation. So maybe we can attract him back, and we're going to try, but if I could just get around for him, because he's put in a lot of work for us. So, thank you.
Well, as long as he gets that $5 million grant.
But the finisher touches on it today. Milo.
All right. I'm Milo. I'm a resident of Edwin Street, and I've lived in Hamtramck since 2017, so there you go.
Thank you.
I guess I don't really have much to add to what Ruben said. You know, this is a project that we've been working on for three and a half years now. My friends and colleagues are here, Will, who's also a tenure resident of Hamtramck and one of our partners, Jubek and John. And we've been putting our heart and soul into this. We spent the last four years renovating five separate vacant units on Joseph Campo, and we haven't come to you guys for that, right? That's something that we did, and we really enjoyed doing that. And John and I are out there hauling refrigerators up to second-story apartments at 10 o'clock at night, you know, after work, because we love this city and we are passionate about making it better. The reason we're coming to you right now is because we've been able to secure this grant after three and a half years of work, and this project is impossible without it, frankly. It's just a huge task. You saw, I think, the pictures of the building. You know, that was actually back in 2019 or 2020 when the water was still coming in the building and we had to stop that. But anyways, it's been a huge process for us, and we're here sort of at, hopefully, the final steps and looking to you guys to help us make this happen. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments, but we're very appreciative of your support.
Thank you. I do have a question.
Sure.
So, Mr. Milo, this, I know you have been working on this for the last three years, and I'd like to help out someone who's trying to block, trying to help the communities and especially commercial industries, and I'm passionate about it. I'm myself a business owner. But do you have any other ones that you're planning to do? Because if you use this, if you get this approved and then you ask for more, and we continuously do the tax abatement to another project after another, you know, then we're going to have to open the door for everybody, you know, and it's, we're going to get a lot of questions from the communities.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. I mean, I guess I would say sort of two things. First off, like I said, this is our sixth project in the last four years. So we have five units that were formerly vacant, all of them for over 10 years, that we've renovated, and we have not come to council asking for anything on that. So that's the baseline that we've set, right? And I guess what I would say is, we don't have any, you know, I guess to answer your question directly, we don't have any other plans to come back to you. But we've saved this for sort of the big project, like this is a much bigger project. This isn't an apartment, this isn't Public Thrift, which is one of the stories that we worked on. This is a big project that, like, we just, between the four or five of us, we don't have the resources to handle without your support. So I guess that's point two, and maybe I have point three, which is, these are important, as Ruben, I think, pointed out, these grants from the MEDC are really important things that people in our community should know about and should be looking for. And, you know, I do think that tax abatements are valuable in that they can bring additional investment from the state of Michigan, right? So in this case, I think the overall value of the abatement is $54,000 over a period of 12 years, and the MEDC is investing five times that, right? So by foregoing that revenue, there's a huge multiple that we're bringing into the community through that MEDC grant. So I think these are important and interesting tools. They should be used selectively. We're using them selectively. Like I said, this is the first time we've asked for it in six renovations, but I would encourage you to think about this in this case.
Milo, another question. So do you think it has to be 12 years tax abatement? Or? Will it be?
Yeah, I mean, so I'll be completely upfront with you. Our term sheet with the state of Michigan doesn't say a specific number of years. That's the expectation that they have communicated to us is 12 years. If we went back to them and we said, "The city wants to support us, but they don't feel like they can do the full 12 years," and it's 10 years, I think that that wouldn't be a huge issue. But, you know, it is important, like, it is an ironclad requirement that we have this abatement, otherwise we will not get the grant and the project unfortunately will not happen.
But you do realize that it's, as Ruben said, that if you don't complete it and we can revoke it?
100%. We understand that.
And that's, okay.
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
I just want to add on to Milo's answer about the, if, how do we know that more people won't come and continue to ask us? So there's important safeguards in place. So the state actually has a requirement that, it's like, 5% of the property value of the city, I think, cannot, like, more than 5%, you can't abate. So it's like, there is a maximum for how many of these you can give out. And the state reviews these applications after they're approved or disapproved from this council. So there are safeguards in place. And the second thing is, it's also, I wrestled with this, and I thought about this question, is this a slippery slope or is it the building of momentum? Because if you have more people that are coming to you because they are redeveloping these buildings in downtown Joseph, that is, that could be seen as they're trying to take more money from the city. It could also be seen as achieving the very thing that you all pass this policy for, which is to encourage development in the city.
So Ruben, in terms of application processing, how hard it, how hard it was, let me repeat that. Was it hard to do these applications with the state of Michigan? Well, it's a very, I know it's a paper trading. I work with the papers every day, so it's a lot of paperwork to do. Because I'm wondering why one of my council colleagues, Sumari, who bought a very old building, which was Shopper's Row, I shopped when I was young, that Shopper's Row, he didn't ask for a tax abatement or he didn't apply for that, you know? Because that's a big project, that's a bigger building than yours, and he has invested a lot of money into that building. So I don't know.
You're telling him to ask?
Yeah.
Help him out, because he's still not done with his internal renovation, you know?
Right.
And that's a bigger building.
Right.
And that's one of the buildings that stands out, and he does a good job with outside, but.
I mean, just to, you know, chime in on that, I mean, I think that would actually be a great candidate for a grant from the state of Michigan and a tax abatement, right? Because that is a huge, that and the building on Belmont, the corner of Belmont and Joseph Campo, those are probably the two biggest buildings, I would say, in downtown Hamtramck that are still empty. So, I mean, that's what these tools are for. They're for sort of these selective cases where you have, like, very, you know, buildings that you had to put a lot of work into and a lot of money, and it's just there to bridge the gap so that a project that's otherwise not possible becomes possible.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, public comment. Then you guys can discuss afterwards.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I have first public hearing comment from Lynn Blazi. Hello again, Mayor.
Did we open the hearing?
Yes, we already opened it before the presentations.
Yeah.
Remember you asked if that's what they wanted to do?
When was the time?
Oh, 8:23. Hello again, Mayor and Council. I support giving businesses that are improving our city tax incentives and trust that the mayor and administration will approve this request. Recent surveys of the DDA district concluded that we have a desperate need for more public restrooms specifically between Holdbrook and Kniff, and a solution to that is more restaurants. It's my understanding that it's, that this microbrewery and community space would help fill that gap and allow more shoppers the ability to shop longer without having to cut their trip short to find somewhere to relieve themselves. This would also be the first microbrewery in the town, and it is a big relief for more of the exact same businesses opening all over the town. It is also my understanding that the business owners requesting that this is, requesting this as a match to a MEDC grant. If they are unable to secure a match, they will lose their MEDC funding, and this project will not move forward. As cited in the attachments, this property has not been a reliable source of income tax for the city for a while, and a tax abatement will not negatively affect our budget since the money hasn't been there anyway. If you're thinking that 12 years is too long, I propose amending to 10 years to be more consistent with the preceding mayor, precedent mayor and the council set with Z Box last fall. Overall, I support this request and again urge the mayor and council to approve the request so the development of this derelict property can move forward sooner than later. And I do have one from Andrew. One of you guys, Andrew? No? Okay. Andrew Kopietz, business owner, 2750 Yemans. Dear Hamtramck City Council, I am writing to express my strong support for the property rehabilitation exemption for Schillmann Silk Shop LLC located at 9350 Joseph Campo Avenue. By granting the OPRE, we can ensure that this new development will bring positive outcomes to our community and downtown's economic growth. The proposed project's goal is to create a community-oriented atmosphere that focuses on fostering connections and conversations while respecting the diverse needs, beliefs, and cultural preferences of all community members. This approach will ensure that all visitors and residents feel welcome and included. The property's rehabilitation is expected to retain or create approximately 15 jobs, including construction employment. Additionally, the renovated development will be open to the community on weekdays as a venue for arts and culture events, creating new opportunities for engagement and connection. Granting the OPRE to Schillmann Silk Shop LLC shows our commitment to economic growth and development, making us a more attractive partner for future projects with this Michigan Economic Development Corporation. By investing in this project, we can create a multiplier effect, increasing foot traffic and attracting new businesses to the area, which in turn can drive economic growth, further enhance employment opportunities, and generate revenue for the city. A significant benefit of this development project is that it won't have any negative impact on the city's budget, is it will maintain a neutral property tax impact for 12 years. On top of that, the proposed rehabilitation of the property will bring in much-needed tax revenue for the city, creating a mutually beneficial outcome. Thank you for considering my input. I am in full support of the approval of the OPRE application for the Schillmann Silk Shop. The proposed development project offers a variety of community benefits such as increased access to cultural and entertainment options, neighborhood improvement and beautification, and additional tax revenue. These outcomes will have a positive impact on the well-being and growth of our community, making it a more dynamic and welcoming place for residents and visitors alike. Sincerely, Andrew Kopietz. And that's it for emails. Mr. Nasser Hussain?
Salam alaikum. Just some information. You're going to have to give seven, you don't have to give 12. You could give 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. They'll just tell you this, so you have the wrong idea, and it's up to you how much you get. Second, the grant, I wrote the requirement, there is no requirement for giving them tax abatement. They could still get the money from the state and allow the tax abatement. They could give the $250. First, is it fair? Like, he's getting free money from the state and he's going to fix it, and he wants tax abatement. Let's say somebody borrows money and he comes and tells you, "I want to fix this building in Joseph Campo." Would you give them 12 years' abatement? With the free money, he should have more incentive to pay the taxes in full. I want to show you this one here. That's the upstairs apartment. We just posted it like two weeks ago. First thing, I assume it probably cost them more than $50,000, $60,000 to fix the apartment this way, but their taxes didn't go up, their assessment. It went like everybody else, like few thousands. I don't know what's wrong with the assessing department of Hamtramck. I knew that when you fix something, your taxable value has to go up, but they didn't. Second thing is their water bills. As I understood from the previous city manager, she had everybody switch to automatic reading. Theirs is still estimates, and they estimate their water consumption to 000. I wonder how they fixed the bathrooms without water and everything, had to make sure that they got the permit without water consumption there. It tells you that some people in Hamtramck have connections, like this gentleman here, you know, the DDA came here for him, emails. They want to save themselves money. You know how much he would save himself? If you don't give him the abatement, he'll pay, as they said, $8,000 in real estate taxes. If he rents the upstairs apartment for $1,700 and he rents downstairs for at least $3,000, that's $60,000, $70,000 a year. For the $60,000, $70,000 a year, he can give $8,000 to the city. And if he thinks $8,000 is too fair, instead of giving him 12 years, he could easily appeal to the property tax board of review, and they're going to lower it for him. It doesn't make any sense to give him this tax abatement. Sumari, Mashallah, he bought the building, he spent probably much more than this gentleman spent on it. Did he ask for a tax abatement? It doesn't make any sense. If he thinks he can proceed with this project, I think he bought it for $150,000, and I'll probably find him a buyer that will buy it for $150,000 and will fix it without costing the city anything and to pay the taxes. When you see they tell you it's going to cost $600,000 for fixing, if you look at the resolution, this is fake numbers. Plumbing, $118,000, one floor, is there any way for shave or form? You have to spend $118,000 to fix the plumbing in one floor? It doesn't make sense. Painting, almost $20,000. Does it make sense? Somebody would paint one floor for $20,000. They just inflate these prices to make you, "Oh, he's going to spend so much money." The $250 is more than enough to fix the first floor. It doesn't make any sense. If you insist on giving him a tax abatement, I think you should lower it on the low end, maybe two, three years max. 12 years is not fair. We have inflation. Now he pays $3,000, and 12 years, $3,000 would be nothing. $3,000, his neighbors will take maybe $7,000, $8,000, $9,000. It's not fair for his neighbor next door paying $7,000, he's still paying $3,000. It doesn't make any sense. Please don't let them trick you. It doesn't make any sense. I know, he won't lose any money. He can easily sell it and get somebody who will fix it for much less than that. Don't, you want a salary? Need the money to pay your salary. Please, don't approve it. Thank you. Or if you approve it, maybe max three years. Thanks.
Is it Danielle Brittigay or Brittigear?
Brittigear.
Brittigear.
Hi, good evening. I feel awfully unprepared because I had my neighbor Bill drag me to this meeting. I didn't really look at the agenda beforehand, but, so all I'm coming forward with today is what I heard. I feel awfully confused about the application that's proposed for this microbrewery, I believe it is. And some things I'm kind of confused about is understanding what it means to beautify and bring business to downtown Hamtramck and specifically a microbrewery, understanding that infrastructure and the interior would have probably specific needs to meet a microbrewery, meaning if this establishment, this building becomes such like a taproom, it probably would stay a taproom, no matter the owner, no matter the business. That's what we're signing up for in Hamtramck. And I'm also confused about this, the cultural aspect, and I think another public comment said something about public restrooms, but we know all restaurants require you to be a guest to use their restroom.
I was going there.
I don't even think that makes sense.
I hope it's the case.
But I'm confused about the cultural aspects because I'm obviously someone who lives in Hamtramck who is very connected to a specific age group and a specific type of, I guess, target group. A lot of these businesses seek to target especially a place like a taproom. And I don't know if it is a community, would be a community benefit, or if many people in the community would actually want to see a taproom in downtown Hamtramck especially. There's so many families here, there's so many other issues on hands like recycling and things like that. And the fact that not many people know about the microgrants, now the applicants have to... so himself, um, that I think, you know, there are some resources that they probably access to be able to work on this, uh, on these, on the application that a lot of people don't even have education under the access to. And I think that's something that the city council could probably consider is how do you provide the education to small business owners, um, who are from Hamtramck to actually be able to apply for similar grants and, and so forth. Um, the other thing I want to do is kind of tie this to, it, it gave me a thought, tying this to the, the Greenway proposal as well and thinking about how we heard so many business owners come up today talking about how they're going to have to close their business. And I actually, um, have a background working for nonprofit organizations like the ones that we saw today that are about urban development. I've done some research on, um, past urban development projects as well and a trend that you see is that these businesses close and what type of businesses open up? Businesses like taprooms, um, businesses that are catered towards a new target residence, basically. Businesses that are catered towards people from not the community and so forth. So I think that, as someone said earlier, you know, when you're applying for this sort of, uh, opportunity, you have to be selective in what you're applying for. And I think as well, the, the city council needs to be selective in who they give it to, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have Milo who'd like to, uh, add to a public comment?
Was there anybody else?
Nope, you're the last one.
I think I check off that one.
All right, then come on up, Bill.
Okay, bye. I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize.
It's okay, Bill.
Okay, fine. Uh, first of all, I commend the young man here for all his ambition in fixing buildings up in the city. We certainly need that and we all talked for years about bringing business to the city. I think that's a great, uh, great project. Uh, I'm not crazy about the fact that it's a taproom. Uh, I don't think that's going to appeal to like 80% of the people in the city, but, uh, we are going to bring back a lot of folks who left because the bars are closing down, so now we'll get another bar back and, uh, go back to the good old days. I don't know. Uh, I really think that we have to be more sensitive about the cultural aspects and I appreciate what Danielle said. Uh, another bar on, uh, on Main Street is, the main street of the city is not what we need. We're finally getting the bars down to where they should be respectively, you know, like I think we have 40 left or something like that, but, uh, another one we don't need. I, I wish he'd come up with another project for that building. I, I appreciate it. You know, maybe a restaurant, we could use a restaurant. There's lots of other things we can use that can appeal to everybody in the city, but a bar is going to have limited use and you're going to have to bring people from out of the city to use this thing, no question about it. We need people to come in and spend money, that part's good and all that. Uh, as far as the, as far as the 12 years, what's the 12 years you asked for, 12 years? Yeah, okay, so, I know he wants to make money. I mean, you don't go into business without wanting to make money, that's why you do it in the first place. Let's be honest about that. So let's get as many years from you guys as we can. 12? Okay, let's start with the highest I can get, 12. Let's start with 12. No? Okay, it's 10. Okay, I'll give you four, I'll give you two. Well, the point is, this is the poorest city in Michigan. Why are you taking money from the poor people in this city so that you can build another bar for people who don't even live in the city? I mean, seriously, think about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Milo?
Yep. Okay. So I just want to address a couple of points. Um, so first of all, yes, the prices are extremely expensive. They're also highly specific costs, right? So there's specific types of paint, there's specific types of plumbing, all these sorts of things that go into this that make it more expensive than, than your average, than your average project. Actually, the latest that we got was actually a $50,000 increase in our budget due to inflation that's happened since this budget was put together in 2022. So the numbers we're coming to you with are actually about 45, $50,000 lower than they'll actually be. And that also does not include our equipment, which is probably going to be a significant expense as well. I guess, uh, I also want to point out, uh, or just respond to the comment that it's not a requirement. I mean, I, I'm happy to show you all our checklist from the MEDC. It is in fact a requirement that we have city support, city financial support. Um, like I said, totally upfront, honest, is not a requirement that we get 12 years. That said, it is a requirement that we have some sort of city financial support. I guess to address the comment about a commitment to the community, um, I guess the first thing I'd say is again, like I've lived here for six years, um, Will has lived here for 10 years, so we are community members and we're building something that we want to see in the community. Um, and I understand that not everybody, you know, wants to see that, um, but we think that it can, it can really be an inclusive space. We are dedicated to, you know, not just having alcoholic events, but events that, you know, there's not alcohol present at, like, like I think, um, uh, was presented by Ruben. Um, and we'll also, um, be serving, you know, food and non-alcoholic beverage, well, non-alcoholic beverages that are made on site will be available. I guess that's really all I have to say. Um, I think I've made my case and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, two hours. I don't know what's going on.
That is it for public comment. If we can motion to end.
We're going to motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Now, discussion. Do you need to open it again?
No, you're, make a motion. Make a motion to, uh.
Open. I'm, I'm making motion to, uh, discuss regarding this matter and with the council. Second.
All right. No discussion from me.
Well, I just want to say something small. Uh, I hear both side, I hear Bill, uh, what Bill said, I heard what Nasser said, but other hand, we all make a commitment during the election time, want more business to be in our city. And, and therefore us, we need to, we need to help those people that are coming up for the business ideas and, you know, the inclusivity. So I'm proposing council to, to some sort of, uh, you know, abatement to fulfill their need and grow business to the city.
Mr. Chair. I want to be, um, an accurate from the attorney, so, Mr. Attorney, do they need the abatement from the city or it has to have a tax abatement in order to get a?
Yeah, I reviewed, I've spoken, I've spoken with Milo.
A program?
Yeah, I've, I've reviewed the paperwork and everything, absolutely. So I can understand why Mr. Hussain doesn't understand the, the legal aspects of it, um, because it's more complicated than some normal things and as was discussed, but absolutely, they, they do need a financial commit from this, commitment from the city. 10 years would be the same as 12, but, um, uh, you want to show them some significant, uh, contribution from the city so that you make sure that the state is on board as well.
All right, so, so when I, uh, when we had the Zbox issue, uh, I negotiated with them and everyone else that, uh, our city is in need of more investments, but at the same time, we need more revenue. Um, and so we pressured them to lower the number of years as low as we could to the point where they said, any lower than this, we'll leave. And the lowest was eight years for them. And that's a 19 million, um, project, um, that we brought with 75, you know, full-time jobs and some part-time jobs and stuff. So I spoke with Milo about this and this is part of the condition from the state that they need some kind of help. It doesn't have to be 12 years, 10 years, something that they can go by to help them, something that can be satisfying to both parties because I know this is going to open the doors for more businesses to, you know, follow your footsteps and ask for more. And I said during the Zbox issue that we need to help our residents as well, not just the big companies. So, uh, I think the council can, uh, suggest a number of years that can help them move with this project. Doesn't have to be that high.
Mr. Chair.
Or 10.
So this public hearing, we have to hit the, take the decision as a resolution today?
Today, yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to offer maximum four years tax break.
Excellent.
So that's the, my proposal, I can go.
So you'd have to motion it and then you have to second unless there's more discussions?
Still talking.
Still wanting to?
Yeah, I'm still talking, nobody talking. Somebody talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like the gentleman, thank you, he came to Hamtramck, you bought the investment. But look, this issue, they got some difference between Zbox, when we have a big bracket.
I'm sorry, but he motioned the discussion has to only be on?
No, we just, I didn't motion.
Oh, you didn't motion?
We got some discussion.
Suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, we got some difference between this place, when people, uh, we need everybody come to Hamtramck to buy a lot of more business, but they got some different. When we have the big bracket, they cost over $20 million and some more small, uh, small place, it costs a hundred thousand in the same issue. That's we're going to open the door. They get many, many people on Hamtramck, they buy every year, three, four places, commercial. And we didn't give him a tax for people, they, they built the new houses. And we have the taxes like almost 12,000. We didn't give him break at least a thousand, $2,000. And many people, they built a new project. Please, you got to figure it out. You have the grant, you're lucky. It's not gonna, it's not gonna lose for the taxes, just work with the city, we'll work with you. It's not gonna, it's not gonna give you a headache. I'd like to support this issue for two years. It's not offer.
Offering two, four and two.
Someone want to make a motion?
Someone have to make the motion, please.
Or more discussion.
I'm making motion to four years.
Second.
They got to vote.
Amendment.
By the, by the four years.
Yeah, four years. Please call the vote, I think, no discussion.
Councilman Hasmari.
What are you going to do?
Vote.
Yes, I'll vote.
Yeah, well, I, I have to accept with all my friends. I like to be to work with, uh, with the people, but we're going to lose it. I have to agree with him.
Thank you. So go ahead.